Good afternoon, it's 3:00 PM, May 16th. Welcome to the Riverhead Town Planning Board Meeting. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good afternoon. We have no public hearings today, so we're just going to start with the discussion items. And we have Heather Trojanowski, you're up first.
Okay. So the first discussion item that I have on today is a Chapter 219 coastal erosion hazard permit application seeking to remove existing wooden retaining walls and install a new 50-foot steel retaining wall with a 10-foot return. They're going to backfill disturbed areas with about 50 cubic yards of clean fill and also install a 10-foot wide vegetated buffer landward of the new retaining wall. It's a Type 2 action pursuant to SECR and the subject parcel is located at 62 Lewin Drive in Wading River identified as South accounting tax number 600-27-1-4. And it's a .3 acre parcel. It's improved with a single-family dwelling and attached rear decks. Just to go over the site history, it took them about two years, I think, to get through the DEC permitting process. I'm not really sure why, because they're basically replacing the retaining wall in kind. They're just changing from wood to steel and they're putting dead man supports in to sort of stabilize that. But they did receive a New York State DEC permit, Title Wetlands permit pursuant to Article 25, valid through February 14th of 2029. And they required that vegetated buffer. It's basically to keep water from flowing over the face of the bluff and prevent further erosion. And they are exempt from a Chapter 229 permit because it's less than 1,000 cubic yards of fill. They're only bringing in 50 cubic yards. They're going to, you know, re-vegetate any disturbed areas with American beech grass. As far as the berm is concerned, I would like to see a little bit of variety, so I provided a couple of suggestions as far as native salt tolerant plantings are concerned. I did refer this to the town engineer and the department found that the documents are acceptable for construction and are approved. So for the NOFE Chapter 219, I have a resolution on to approve the Chapter 219 permit, subject to any and all conditions of the New York State DEC permit and town code guidelines. So, does anyone have any questions?
Is this going to be a steel?
Yeah, steel retaining wall.
So in between, in between the dead man, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be completely. So they're removing all of whatever wooden retaining walls there. It's in really poor condition. I went out to the site and I could barely see like where the retaining wall was just because it, you know, it's deteriorated. I will say the bluff, you know, going down to the toe, it's all terraced.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Yeah, so the bluff itself is in fairly good condition, but that retaining wall at the top of the bluff on this person's property is, it needs to be replaced. And the architect Jeff Son, he's not here today, but if you have any specific questions about, you know, the retaining wall construction, he stamped all of the plans for construction, so as far as material is concerned. The DEC approved it based on what he submitted to them and what you have before you.
It took them two years. Took them two years.
Yeah, I mean.
Two years for DEC, yeah.
Yeah, DEC, I'm not sure why it took so long, but you could see in the revisions on the plans, this goes back to, I think, yeah, this goes back to May of last year and it's not. But we could dovetail into the next Chapter 219 application.
Heather, sorry, how much fill was going in?
50 cubic yards.
It says on SP2, it says pressure-treated tongue and groove wood. Right on top.
Oh, so maybe that's what's going on top and they're using the steel, steel beams to...
It appeared to me that they were going to drive steel I-beams into the ground.
Yeah, they're using like a low-pressure excavator to do that.
Right, and then it looked like they were going to put tongue and groove in between the two steel I-beams and between the webbing of the beams. That's what it looked like on the drawing. It didn't look like it was going to be a total steel bulkhead. It looked like it was going to be steel I-beams.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess it's a combination of steel and wood, but I think the biggest thing is they're taking whatever wood beams are existing out and replacing it with steel.
Right.
And they're going to go down 20, almost?
Yeah, they're going down fairly deep in order to...
With the steel beams.
Yeah, and that's why they need the low-pressure excavator.
Yeah.
But again, the DEC reviewed and approved all of this. Again, I'm sorry Jeff Son isn't here answering specific questions about the actual construction of the wall, but in terms of like town code and Chapter 219 guidelines, it complies and they, you know, received their DEC. So at this point, if the board has any other conditions they want to add, I do have our resolution on to approve it so they can move forward with the building department.
Any other questions? All right, so if you want to dovetail into the next one.
Yeah, so the next application is actually for the property directly west of this parcel. So this parcel, all of the parcels along Lewin Drive within Lewin Hills, they're part of the Lewin Hills Property Owners Association. And the property next door, so that's not numbered, but the tax number is 600-27-1-3. It's owned by the Lewin Hills Property Owners Association. And what they're doing, they're basically doing the same thing that the NOFE residence, which is the property contiguous to this one is doing, where they're removing the wooden retaining wall and they're replacing with those steel I-beams. They're tying into the NOFE retaining wall. And then they're also tying into an existing retaining wall on private property to the west. Yeah, and again, they're all part of the Lewin Hills Property Owners Association. So I did, you know, I was able to go out and make a site inspection. Rich Ostrowski sort of heads the Property Owners Association. He allowed me access because it is gated and locked. They have sort of like a courtyard, grassy area with a path, and there is an existing small deck that they're going to remove in order to facilitate the construction of the new retaining wall. They're going to replace it in kind. They're doing the same thing with the stairs that are at the top of the bluff. And I went down the staircase to the beach. That was replaced, I think, in 2012 according to building department records, so that's in fairly good condition. And again, this section of bluff is all terraced, just like the property to the east.
Well, in this application, it's clear that they're using steel and not wood. If you read, if you read the bid plans, both improvements replaced with a 50 linear-foot steel retaining wall with dead man supports and vertical steel beams.
Yeah, but then in, to Joe's point on the last, the last application on SB2, the plan view of wall, which is towards the top of the page, it says three-inch pressure-treated tongue and groove wood lagging.
All right, I think that, I think that is kind of, it's just a little confusing there, isn't it?
Yeah, because the, the application description spoke to a steel retaining wall. Oh, good. Jeff, we could come up just because the board has a couple of questions. Just introduce yourself for the record.
How you guys doing? My name's Jeff Son, I'm the architect. Address is 215 Roanoke Avenue.
Yeah, so we already discussed the NOFE application. We're on the Lewin Hills Property Owners Association. We just had a question because both applications reference on the replacement of the wood retaining wall with a steel retaining wall, and they just had a question about the tongue and groove wood lagging in the plan detail.
Okay, what was the question?
What's it going to be? Is it going to be 50 linear feet of steel or is it going to be the tongue and groove dropped in between the?
It's tongue and groove dropped in between the steel.
What's the dimensions on the tongue and groove?
It says three inches in six-foot sections on the plan.
The depth usually goes down like two feet below.
No, no, what's the size of the, of the wood, Jeff? Is it three, three by eight? Three by eight?
Usually probably three by eight.
Okay.
What's the three-inch thickness?
Right, right.
It's like, it's like building a dock.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, so this will be constructed basically the same as the NOFE residence where it has the dead man supports going into the bluff. And again, they're using the low-pressure excavator to get those steel beams down. And they'll be using the Property Owners Association for all of the construction material and staging, so it'll be solely on that property.
Both projects are going to be done at the same time?
I spoke, so Rich Ostrowski said that NOFE is probably going to start his first and then it'll tie into the Lewin Hills property.
Separate contractors?
Same contractor.
Same contractor, I'm assuming because they both used you as the design professional. So it, it just makes sense, you know, to start probably from the easterly property, move west, and then they'll tie into the new retaining wall on the Lewin Hills Association property.
That is, that is the plan.
Yeah.
So all the building material and all the work will actually go through that easement area?
That little like courtyard, yeah. And as far as DEC is concerned, it's sort of the same thing. They received a Title Wetlands permit pursuant to Article 25. It's good through April 22nd of 2029. And as with the other application, DEC is requiring that vegetated berm on the top just to prevent the, you know, stormwater from running down the bluff. The town engineer found the documents acceptable for construction and they approved this as well. And as with, with the other application, they're bringing in about 50 cubic yards of clean fill, which is exempt from Chapter 229 because it says the material imported shall not exceed 1,000 cubic yards per year, and this is only 50 cubic yards.
What about drainage? Self-contained, is it drainage?
Well, we have to do, the DEC requires you to do the berm at the, the top of the bluff to retain any runoff. Correct.
Yeah, and then the NOFE property, like that's residential, so they're required any sort of stormwater runoff, like from the house, they're required to contain it on-site. That's town code.
Now, who's responsible for any of the cleanup of the construction or any damage, you know, that, that could occur? Who's responsible for that?
That would be, I'm assuming the home, NOFE, the homeowner would be responsible for anything that happens on their property, the Lewin Hills Association property.
What kind of damage do you?
Well, I'm just saying you're bringing in equipment and everything else. You're going to have tracks and dump truck dumping the dirt.
Yeah, the contractor will, you know, regrade that to.
Okay, and he'll bring it back to, you know, natural, whatever?
Yeah, I mean, a requirement of a building permit, the contractor, the GC has to provide their insurances, so liability, workers comp and disability. So the liability, I would think, they would assume anything if the Lewin Hills Property Association, if there's damage to their property. But that's something that would be worked out between the contractor and the Lewin Hills Property Owners Association.
Okay, all right.
So as with the other application, I have a resolution on to approve this, just so they can move forward and get their building permits. Do you have any other questions?
Heather, does the building permit require them to regrade to close it out?
I mean, I'd have to speak to Andreas. So they're bound by whatever DEC approved. That's sort of like the biggest step in the 219 process. And then they come through planning board and then they go and they get their building permits. But really, the biggest thing for us, I think, is that berm that DEC is requiring. So the 219 approvals make them subject to any and all conditions and requirements of the DEC permits.
Okay. So by putting those berms in, it's not going to divert water and, and cause erosion in other areas like on other people's property?
No.
It's supposed to be self-contained?
Yeah, I don't think they're large enough to make that much of an impact. They're only about, I think, 10 to 12 inches high. And I did refer this to Drew in engineering, so I think that if there were any concerns, he would have brought them up in his review.
Anybody have anything?
I'm good.
Good, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next up, we have Matt Charters, 1125 Old Country Road.
Yes, and I'll have the applicant come up, Paul Polaski. Paul, you can come up. Yes, so 1125 Old Country Road. If the board's familiar, this is the old Blockbuster building on Route 58 in front of West Marine and the office on Staples. So this is an administrative site plan for basically facade improvements. They're going to be replacing all the windows on-site in kind. There's going to be a new exterior stucco facade and then that wood, if you're familiar, there's like some wood trim that's in poor condition. That's going to be replaced with pretty plank. So really just a nice cleanup for this site that needs a little help. They're also going to be repaving the parking lot, doing some plantings in there as well, repaving the sidewalks that are on-site. And as you can see here, doing some cross-access, which for this site is really good because there isn't any right now. There's some informal, some informal in the back, but.
Right.
No real cross-access. In terms of SECR, this is a Type 2. You know, just as I described, this is up on 58 at 1125 Old Country Road, shopping center zoning use district. There's an AT&amp;T now and an Al Salon, and I think the Blockbuster's been vacant since Blockbuster left.
Yes.
Yeah, which is a long time now.
It had some pop-up Halloween things.
Oh, yeah, Halloween costumes.
The access strips on the side?
Yep.
They're not built yet?
Not built yet.
They will be.
They will be. I'm going to go, in my report, I go through it a little bit. So we did get a cross-access plan, building elevations, copy of a survey and a narrative as well as some, some renderings of what the building's going to look like. That should all have been in your packet. I think it's a nice improvement to what's there. It's a nice cleanup. So if you looked at the pictures that are in my staff report, you can kind of see the 58 side of the building has one style brick and then the back has a different style brick. So this is going to really help everything mesh together well. In terms of cross-access, they show two 24-foot wide cross-access on the plan here and here. We got a nice title reports about this thick on the property. The good thing is that back in 1989 and 1990, when the site plan was approved for this, it was a requirement that they file cross-access to all adjacent parcels. I don't, it doesn't appear that that ever got filed or it required as for this application.
But they, they are legal, one on the east, one on the west?
Yeah, so it said, so a condition of approval was to file it to all adjacent parcels. It didn't get filed, but we can enforce that now, but he does file that. And then in 2006, which I think is when they were doing work on the larger piece, they actually did file a cross-access easement. And you can see I did a snippet of it in our, in your, in the staff report, which shows it here. It also shows it back here, which is where the informal cross-access is now. You can see there's like a dirt driver that people drive through when I was taking pictures. Someone actually drove through there. It was kind of hopping off the curb. I don't know that we really needed it in the back. As long as it functions across the side, I'd like to see something, at least a future cross-access to this parcel, because you, what you can't see in this plan is this fronts on 58 and then there's a flag lot here that comes down. So really to get the full connection. So I think this would be fine for future, future here, and then to open this one, which would really help the situation.
Matt, who owns the, the lot to the south? That dirt, you know, where?
So that's all part of the shopping center. The shopping center comes around like a now.
The dirt is part of, not to interrupt, the dirt is part of our property.
Okay, are, are you going to improve that or are you going to leave that? More parking?
It's going to stay the way it is. I've, as a condition of approval, that's for re-veg, obviously put the law back in, maybe some plantings back there. But yeah, we're going to have to do a little bit of cleanup so people aren't driving on it anymore, which the opening here will help them from doing that. Hasn't been to ARB yet, but it's going to go to ARB next Wednesday. That's a condition of approval.
So is there going to be a curbing there so people can't drive through?
There's, there's curb now, I think.
So what's interesting, right now we're going to re-vegetate.
Paul, if you could just introduce?
I'm sorry, Paul Polaski, owner of 111, it's actually 1105.
That's for Blockbuster, so the entire parcel is 1125.
1125 Old Country Road, thanks for your time. So to discuss anything on cross-access, we're willing to do whatever you guys require and file it. I do believe these were filed, I'll try and get you that. And whether it's two on the side or however you want to do it. This back area for now, we will re-vegetate and if needed, you know, put up a fence along the back if you want to put that as, we would like that. Just so, just kind of a heads up, McLean will be submitting something down the road, potentially for a Phase 2 there to do more parking in a smaller building if we can do it without a variance. But right now, our goal is just to clean up the existing building in sight. But yes, this is being, literally today I was parked there and there's a dumpster there. And the lady came up and said, can you relocate the dumpster so we could cross-access in a Honda Accord?
Yeah, it was a little car when I was there too.
And I felt bad because she's a creature of habit because we've only owned it three weeks.
Right.
And she actually lives in the Honda Accord, sleeps there, and every single day at the same exact time, she pulls into the Blockbuster and stays there all day reading the paper. So I felt bad, but I did give her the heads up that our goal is to re-vegetate that soon because it is, it's a disaster. I mean, it's cross-access probably 20 times a day, minimum, from what I've just seen.
Looks like it's been driven over quite a bit.
So yeah, our goal is definitely to immediately improve it and then, you know, we could do a, you know, four-foot code compliant fence along the back for now, and then eventually it will be parking and potentially, regardless, it will be something.
This is the AT&amp;T.
We're AT&amp;T, yeah.
Just going to ask, you think it'd be worth it to have a curb cut there for somebody in a wheelchair or somebody pushing a baby carriage or something, would be able to access one parking lot to the other?
So it's, so.
Or those drive?
In this easement, it says it's for vehicular and pedestrian cross-access, so it would have to be at a grade that I guess meets ADA. I know there's a little bit of a grade change.
That's another big thing. So the reason why we're going to redo the parking lot is because I, I dated back to like the 40s. This, this building was like the first building around.
Yes, it was.
And I think it had some sort of farm aspect to it because they're the only ones that dug out the rear part. Every elevation behind it is higher than there, and I believe it was for a loading dock, an inexpensive way to create a loading dock because of that back ramp on Blockbuster. But we will raise the grade so it's level without affecting anything. It should have been natural. There's already a ton of drainage there and everything to accept it, but we're taking all the water from everywhere around. So instead of just redoing the asphalt, we would bring it up roughly six to eight inches depending on to, to fix that. So that's ADA compliant cross-access.
Didn't Amber, was Amber well drilling? Didn't he build that?
I'm not sure, I think.
Yeah, here's your go, he built that.
Yeah, the front part was the first building, which was the original brick and the red brick in the back was what they added on. So the front is wood, the back is steel, and the whole thing is actually a cinder block brick-faced building. So that's one of the reasons why we're doing what we can to make it better without demoing the building with the stucco.
The only question I have is that the frame decking in the back on the west side, are you keeping that?
No, because we're going to regrade this, so you don't need that. So the sidewalks would remain and that deck would become a sidewalk.
So in terms of the grading, we would like to see grading a drainage plan?
No problem.
If you can bring it in, we can, we can approve this and have you come back to approve that. So just so the town engineer.
You know what, right now the goal is the facade. McLean's literally going to submit next week everything else, or two weeks from now. Because our goal, number one, right now you can see, we replaced the roof because it was leaking. I can't believe there's tenants in there. And the only work we're doing in the front where you see the blue skin is all the flashing came down to the secondary awning. We're not touching the siding until the ARB approves whatever they approve. But right now, we did the roof, the, the windows and the flashing only, but I could do a full.
Yeah, so what I'll do.
You know, with McLean immediately.
I'm just going to recommend a condition that prior to any regrading or like that will, will include as a condition of approval prior to issuing to the building permit for that stuff.
That's great.
I have one more question. What type of signage were you going to put out? Is it going to be like one side in front of a building or each building is?
Just what is, so what's there now is each store gets their own. So there's two signs currently. And then, and then we'd like to get rid of the, the road sign. So it's ugly. We've already cut, cut the wood top off and I just need to, just full transparency, I need to just make sure the leases with the two tenants that are there are okay with it. We as owners want it gone, it's ugly, and I don't think it's needed. People know where they're going in Riverhead, right?
Now, Matt, what you, if the gentleman takes it down, does he need a new permit to put up another one?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, just remember that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I didn't take it down, it just, it had like wood all over it. But we're happy to, and if, if it's preferred, I would then send that letter to the tenants saying, you know, let's get rid of this. It's AT&amp;T, they're a little difficult with signage though.
Okay, in terms of landscaping, they do show some boxwoods in the front, crepe myrtle in the back parking lot. There were street trees in front, I know they weren't in great shape, but.
All of them were dead and we'll put.
We'll look for some new street, street trees, subject to planning staff approval. If you guys are okay with that. I think there were four or five in the front, just to replace them in kind.
Yep.
With stuff that's in better shape. So I do have a resolution on to approve this. It is going to be amended as we discussed to take out the reference for mylar because we don't reference mylars anymore. And we will add a condition that prior to any, I would say, regrading of the property import or export of material, we'll need to approve a grading drainage plan.
The only, just so, if you do drive by the back, we're going to see this weekend, the sandy area. We're not taking fill away.
That's okay.
I just, there's two reasons the excavator is there, to crush the dumpsters, because the, and also to just regrade that without removal or adding fill.
In the back, yeah, that's fine. That's good.
Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Nice cleanup, we'll do it, yeah. Thank you. So just when you vote, remember as amended.
Okay, next we have Sandy Pond Mini Golf with Greg Bergen.
All right, thank you. So this is just a quick update on the status of the Sandy Pond Mini Golf course. As the board will recall, you recently granted approval for the construction of the 18-hole mini golf course with the associated parking lot related improvements. During the review of that application, as you recall, there was an existing buffer towards the northeast corner of the property along Roanoke Avenue. I really specifically acknowledged during the review that that buffer wasn't exactly the most attractive, but nonetheless, it served the purpose of screening the golf course from the right-of-way of Roanoke Avenue. On page two of the staff report, you can see a before picture, which was taken from Google Maps in October 2019. So as a condition of approval, that area was required as a 20-foot wide non-disturbance buffer. However, I did, and it was recorded in the minutes of the meeting when we discussed it, that I acknowledge that some selective cleaning up of the area, you know, removal of like dead brush and scrub stuff would be acceptable as long as it was done in close consent with the planning staff to make sure that the area just didn't get clear cut. So on April 24th, I received a call, I met Mr. Starf, who's the project sponsor out of the site. I went through that buffer, we probably spent about a half hour on-site discussing the status of the buffer, the vegetation. At that time, you know, I had informed him that as we had discussed, I wouldn't be opposed to some selective removal of dead vegetation. So I had instructed him to, one, mark out where that 20-foot non-disturbance buffer was from the property line, so that we could actually identify what's in the buffer, what's outside the buffer. And then he was told and he agreed that he was going to go flag, you know, specific, you know, significant vegetation, significant trees, you know, what was going to remain and what was going to stay. He was then supposed to call me for a follow-up to essentially verify what he had flagged, if I saw anything else that stuck out that we wanted to keep. Long story short, that call never happened. Member Zilnicki actually brought to my attention that following week. So I went out to the site on May 2nd, and as you can see on the second page of the staff report, you can really see the before and after. Probably saved about a dozen trees in that buffer area, which, to the extent that I'm thankful. thankful that he retained those trees, I am, but again, it was just sort of very frustrating that we had an understanding of the process that we were going to have, you know, the board, as well as I like to think myself, are very reasonable, pretty easy to work with. It was really just the total disregard for what the board had agreed upon and what we had agreed upon. I was sort of told the answer, well, my guys were there on the weekend and they just went nuts. To me, that doesn't really fly, you know, like, if you're the boss, you're the boss, the buck stops with you, if your guys go and sort of over-clear, really, that's on you. So.
That's what the sketch is all about?
Yes, so, and again, so in, in short order, very quickly after it was brought to my attention, I went out, I informed Mr. Stark. He provided me with a proposed landscaping plan for that northeastern corner, which would cover that buffer area, as well as a portion of the northern property line, which is shared with Mr. Terry's, you know, processing yard to the north. The plan that he provided is very substantial, calls for a significant amount of plantings, they're substantial size, substantial species, I mean, there's probably nearing 100 plants in this area. I did have Heather, who's our resident green thumb, she reviewed it. One of, and that, so I support this plan. Couple of recommendations, so basically, I would like this plan to be shown on the revised Young &amp; Young site plan prior to approval. The existing trees that are in that buffer, I want them identified on an amended landscaping plan, identified by species and diameter at breast tight, I want to make sure that those trees do not accidentally come down, being that now this is the, if you recall, before Mr. Stark had submitted the application, he had illegally cleared a portion of the property on the southeast corner, so that was sort of strike one, this is strike two. I just want to make sure that these trees don't accidentally come down again, no one gets, you know, both those are happy, so identify and flag the existing trees on a landscaping plan. They are proposing Cornus cusae, those should be replaced with Cornus florida, as that's a native vegetation. I'd recommend a two-foot berm be shown on that, on that landscape buffer area, just to help raise those plants up, provide better screening. And that these plans are in addition to, they still have to provide the proposed street trees that were shown on the previously approved site plan, and that any additional landscaping throughout the site, this is just supplementing that, so it's not replacing anything. So I would, I'll transmit these recommendations to Mr. Stark before we have an approval. At the next meeting, I would like to see that revised plan.
And notice he's bringing, he's bringing in, I suppose, the boulders?
Yeah, so, yeah, I believe they're native, native boulders, which is interesting, native or non-native, but, yeah, so they are just, again, just landscaping elements, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with the boulders and the landscaped areas. So that's it, just, we're here to just, if the board has any objections, I mean, again, in an optimal world, I will acknowledge, as I've said before from the start, the existing buffer was not particularly attractive, but if this plan had come in from the start, that's how it should have happened, not, I'm just going to come in, as you recall, the plan, the note on the original plan just said selective removal and augmentation, which is really very vague in my opinion. If this plan would have come in from the start, we would have had no problems with it, this would have been approved along with the landscaping, it's just really not the way the process should happen.
Right.
Greg, I've got to agree with you, because when I drove past it the next day, I had called Brian, and I said, Brian, what did you do? And one of the things that, and it's not just Brian, but any application that comes in front of the planning department, then us, we all have rules and regulations, codes that we have to follow, our vote goes according to code and everything else, not our opinion. It makes it very difficult and puts people in tough places when he goes out, or anyone goes out and does whatever they want. And it's not just in this situation, but other applications, if they do the same thing. What he's got to realize is that you guys work real hard to get things done the right way. You may not agree with all the codes, because I don't agree with all of them 100%, but work with us, you know, because don't blame people for things that you did, you know, and he's going to do a beautiful job, that's not the question. But just work with us, that's all we ask for.
I agree, I appreciate those sentiments, and I absolutely agree.
It's like asking for forgiveness.
Correct. And again, if this came in, this is, this will be a beautiful landscaping plan, it'll be vibrant, it'll provide effective screening, just, it should have happened in a process. And you know what? I'm sure there was more than enough work that still needs to be done on the site where those trees didn't need to be immediately removed, you know, I'm sure he's still working right now, so there's no question that, okay, let me, let me stay out of the buffer for now, and I'll address the 50 other things that I've got to do on the site, so.
I think it's a good idea to take the assessment, make the assessment now of what's there, and then, and then we know. Again, it's, I'm sure at the end of the day, it's all going to look beautiful.
Yeah.
The boulders he can pick up from, you know, from his neighbor, I'm sure he's got a million of them, so.
Got a couple of neighbor boulders. And just, you know, speaking to the inventory of existing trees, this is something that we're really going to press, press more for when we get site plan applications that have existing vegetation. It's something not that this board is necessarily under their purview, but I review a lot of applications, when I take in applications for the Conservation Advisory Council, which deal with applications for development along the waterfront, and we've had several applications recently where we've had them do detailed inventories of trees within non-disturbance buffers. A lot of times, what we'll see is, we'll get an application, or, you know, done after the fact, where it sort of puts us behind the eight ball, where we don't know what was there, what the quality, what the condition of it was, but when we get these applications and we have a verified tree inventory, now we have a baseline to establish where if several years down the road, we go and see that it's completely cleared, we have something that we can verify and say, well, on this date, at this time, you had 45 trees of, you know, this caliber throughout the buffer area, so it, it gives us a lot more inventory and a lot more, I won't say ammunition, but it gives us a baseline to establish what was there, if we need to, you know, pursue measures to have them re-vegetate.
Just to work together, Greg, you know, that's the biggest thing.
So again, I will transmit the recommendations I would anticipate at the next meeting, first meeting in June, that these plans would be translated over to a formal landscaping plan, and we could have an approval on to, a resolution on to approve.
Good job, Greg.
Now, we want to, public comments on resolutions? Anybody on Zoom?
No Zoom.
No Zoom today?
Anybody in the public?
Okay, so.
I'll move, I'll move Resolution 2024-036 for the No fee resident to Chapter 219. Still moved?
Second.
Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
And I'm yes. Resolution approves.
I'll move Resolution number 2437, granting Chapter 9 approval, not Chapter 219 approval.
Second.
Hazardous waste in Lewin Hills Association.
Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
Yes. Resolution, I'm a yes, resolution approved.
Resolution 2024-038, 1124 Old Country Road, the facade improvements result clearing, administration approval for a site plan application would propose exterior alterations to an existing multi-unit retail building.
As amended.
As amended.
Sorry, as amended. I'll second.
Can we get a second? Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
And I'm a yes, resolution approved.
Just clarifying, Resolution 39, there was an error in the agenda, this is to assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration, there was a, just a little holdover from a prior application, prior information, so this is an application to assume lead agency and issue a negative declaration.
I'll move Resolution number 39, which assumes lead agency status and issues a negative declaration pursuant to secret for the plant on Second Street Townhouses.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
And I'm a yes, resolution approved. Okay, public comments on all matters?
I'll move the meetings of April 18, 2024, so moved?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Zilnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Nenaro?
Aye.
And I'm yes. Okay, any other business, correspondence? Okay, next meeting is going to be Thursday, June 6, at 6:00 PM. 6:00.
Motion to adjourn.
6:00 PM, motion to adjourn.
So moved?
So moved.